Good evening, welcome to the Wilson Central School District Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, by Lieutenant Carter, Superintendent Schools. As usual, I usually mention there will be a point in the meeting for public comments. If you're not here in the auditorium and are at home or watching this act of fact, you can always call the district office at seven one six seven five one nine three nine nine and gauge message to the Board of Education if you miss the thought. At this time, I'm going to turn the board meeting over to President Carter.
Thank you Superintendent Carter, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Item one B, approved meeting minutes dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item two, Superintendent Carter, through public hearing.
Thank you. This opens the public hearing for the second time for our district school-wide safety plan. And the reason for this second posting of the district safety plan is in accordance with DSH's law, all school districts are required to develop and adopt a cardiac emergency response plan, and it has to be as part of our district-wide school safety plan. So our safety risk specialist from Moremings Niagara Bosse's Paul Malaka, along with his colleagues, created a template for the cardiac emergency response plan and we filled in the people of interest or people that needed to be put into this plan. The plan itself is kept in the building level emergency response plan, which already been updated and approved by our board, our school board. Safety risk has revised the district plan to include the cardiac emergency plan and it was attached and sent to us. And the study, if you're going to the district website, you'll find our district's school-wide safety plan, and beginning on page twenty is our sudden cardiac arrest plan, and you're welcome to take a look at that. That will be on the district website for thirty days, and then the board will be willing to approve it. And that's our public meeting. Board members, do you have any questions about the addition of that plan? Excellent, thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Carter. Item three A, resolved that the Wilson Central School District Board of Education approved items B through E in the financial consent agenda is submitted by the administration. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Again, I'll turn over the special presentation to Superintendent Carter for an A straight up review.
Thank you President Carolyn, we have two presentations review for A. Right now, we're going to hold for B till after our tenure and school board recognition. Reception give individuals a chance to duck out if they so please. But at this time, I'd like to just mention that this week, we joined schools and communities across our state in celebrating School Board Recognition Week, a time to honor the dedicated men and women who served on our Board of Education. Our school board members are volunteers who give countless hours to ensure our students have every appropriate opportunity to succeed. They review policies, approve budgets, make decisions that shape the future of our school district, often behind the scenes, without any fanfare, and certainly without any monetary gain. Yet their impact is felt in every classroom, every program, and every success story that begins in our district. Serving our school board is not easy work. It requires thoughtful leadership, patience, and an unwavering commitment to what's best for students. Each board member brings a unique experience and perspective, but they share one goal, to support our students, our teachers, our staff, and our community. I want to personally thank the school board for their vision, dedication, and heart. You help guide our mission, keep us focused on the continuous improvement, and you remind us why we do what we do, to make a difference in the lives of our children. On behalf of the students, staff, and families, thank you for your leadership, your service, and your passion to educate for education. We are truly grateful to have you all. Happy School Board Recognition Week to the members serving on our Wilson District School Board, President Chris Conlon, Vice President Kathy Stewart, Beth Hart, Tim Propp, RJ Seager, Nate Wass, Jason Wollison, and Madeline Tukarski, our student board member. Thank you for everything you do, and please enjoy the gift that was given to you. The coasters were made by Mrs. Preymus's tenth period sixth through eighth grade students, and thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you all for the recognition, and school board members, if you have anything to say, but thank you for the recognition. Item five A, accept the resignation of Kathleen Pashaw as JV and referrals basketball coach effective September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item B, accept the resignation of Stacia Sodell, teacher aide, effective November fourteen, twenty twenty-five, for retirement purposes.
So moved.
Do you have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Uh, Mr. Wilkie.
All right, Mr. Smiley, absolute pleasure to recommend Natalie Skoljak for tenure tonight. She's a fourth grade teacher over at S. And I don't even know where to begin to call positive things about Natalie. First of all, her positive attitude, especially with kids, you can throw anything at Natalie and she just takes it, and she has a smile on her face, just like she does right now, and you know, she handles everything so well, so we're so thankful for that. Instructionally, she is so sound for classroom management, it's amazing the way she just commands that kid's attention, and they are all in on her, and it's because she gives them introspection, and she does a great job. She's super engaging with what she teaches, she's innovative, she's creative, just everything about her teaching is fantastic, and I wish I had a hundred Nattlys in the building because she's just that phenomenal. So she's a great part of our culture and in our building, and we are looking to have her, I'm super excited to work with her for many, 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 many years. So word of her recommendation for Natalie.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wilkie. Item six A, tenure appointment on recommendation of Timothy Carter, Superintendent of Schools. Natalie Skoljak is hereby appointed on tenure to the tenure area of elementary education. The tenure service shall begin on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. The appointee is initially certified in the early childhood education, birth through grade two, and childhood education's grades one through six certification area. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Congratulations.
And I believe we're going to take a ten minute pause, maybe five minute pause, to cupcakes and to celebrate Natalie's tenure and also school board recognition. Cupcake time. Don't let anyone go without a cupcake. Mrs. Pavani, if you want, we can go get cupcakes. Kids, you too, go get cupcakes. Okay, board members, if you can get back in, fortunately, we have to talk about our school board resolutions. Trustee Stewart is going to take it. Trustee Stewart has to attend the annual meeting that is coming up, and part of that is going through the resolutions. I'm going to start on page thirteen with resolution one. Just giving my opinion, board disagrees with it, says by the smell. Resolution one, resolved that New York State School Board Association opposed to expand the mayoral control to the district of New York City. I have no position on that, that's up to New York City to figure out.
Can I have to vote?
Yeah. You pick.
Okay.
I don't think district each other, you can vote or abstain from that.
Well, when it's beyond New York City, what do they mean?
This is specific to New York City, so I don't want to speak to them, I don't know if that's what they want or not. Proposal two, resolved that New York School Board Association support legislation at the state or federal level that allow enhanced sharing of services among districts and other municipalities, and we should support that and consider services. If we already do, the board sees, extend that would be awesome. Resolution three, resolved that New York State School Board supports proposals aimed at addressing the cost of administrative burdens legal actions related to special education placements and services. Since we've written one very similarly, we've read about four times, I think we should say yes to that one. Resolution four, New York School Board Association supports incorporating pre-K funding into the school aid formula used for K to twelve. Think we should support that? Yeah. But it's not a standalone, it's actually being given back at the same level as every student. Resolution five, resolved that New York State School Board Association produces widely recommend broad policies and language to be added to the existing policy related to child abuse, stating that adopting districts will cover and facilitate all school personnel, including those who are mandated reporters. Here's my opinion on that, we don't have a choice, it's a law, so you might as well say yes, because we don't have a choice. All school personnel are considered mandated reporters, and every time the legislature changes the reporting or asks to retrain, school districts, school boards definitely have a choice in that matter, but we're welcome to say yes.
But if it's already a reality of life, would it be a proposed resolution?
Not sure. I view these pretty much with a committee in isolation, so.
Including isolation?
Yeah, including isolation from state law. Resolved that New York State School Board Association opposes proposal to raise the number of charter schools authorized by the state. I think we should oppose that. Resulted, New York State School Board Association shall advocate for the overhaul of the current inadequate testing systems to more actively measure achievement skills, knowledge, and abilities, and it shall do this by, there's a number of things that you could see, I think we should recommend that. Although they didn't have a consensus on the committee, but I think we should say yes to that. The one-stop testing does not give an accurate picture of our students. Resulted, New York State School Board shall advocate for a number of lockdown drills to be reduced from four to two each year. I don't know what subtracting two is going to do. I had no position on that, so whatever you feel, I don't think we, I mean, it's like over safety away, I mean, it doesn't.
I get the rationale, but it's a fear.
Yeah, it's about the fear, the, I mean, the way we do it, I don't think there's a lot of angst in the classroom, so.
I think it might be just an issue like that, particularly on district, I mean, it's only one district supports its own recognition.
And the committee was neutral on that, they didn't have a opinion either. Resolution nine, resolved the School Board Association support legislation which allows creation of regional high schools when determined by the local Board of Educations to educationally and fiscally appropriate. Yeah, I said another that. I like our little school district right here, seeing it going to a regional system being functional. Resolution ten, in light of the recent heat, extremely heat-conditioned days, being an unfunded mandate, New York State School Board Association supports the state providing school districts and businesses with necessary funding to allow for air conditioning and appropriate electrical needs in all public school buildings, similar to what was done with the technology needs to create a grant that they basically put, Smart Schools Grant, I forget what that was, Smart Schools Grant, they put a chunk of money aside, put the interest, kept using the interest to fund these projects. I think we should say yes to that, they're going to give us money for air conditioning, but I think.
Can we use that for the middle school project?
We use our capital out, like, oh, so which is similar to, we put up a hundred thousand dollars and we get back the fund in a year, about eighty-seven percent, about eighty percent of that back. So that's a similar thing, but we've been advocating to expand that to two hundred thousand. That's, I mean, one of the issues that I mentioned in our admin session was that our current outlay project is above thirty thousand dollars over, thirty, forty thousand dollars over, because of materials and tariffs and things like that. So it's, you know, we either have to reduce the number of classrooms that we're going to put air conditioning in, or find a way to fund the rest of that money. We haven't figured out what we're going to do, but that's going to, using that pricing, when we do the capital project phase three, we had here in our twenty classrooms, in those school, high school, and elementary school, that money's not going to be able to cover those twenty classrooms, it's probably going to be reduced down to fifteen. So, you know, if the states can put money aside, I think we should. Number eleven, resolved that New York State School Board Association support the state in safely incorporating AI in curriculum and history operations. I mean, I really didn't have a position on that, I think it's a district-level decision, and I've mentioned that it's part of the technology curriculum that state had. I don't think school board, that's like getting into the weeds. Number twelve, resolved that School Board Association opposed proposals that would provide tuition tax credit or educational vouchers that benefit private schools. I said yes, we should oppose that?
You proposed that through the years, then trying to get that in. So Superintendent Carter, just to be clear, you're saying yes to the resolution which opposes.
Correct.
Okay. So you're not opposing the resolution?
No, I'm supporting the resolution to oppose private schools.
I figured that's what you meant, just the negative.
It doesn't make sense that public school leaders say yes to that, I don't even know why it's on there.
Right.
Resolved that, this is number thirteen, thirteen down, ten more to go. Resolved that New York State School Board Association shall advocate to the New York Department of Education, the United States Department of Agriculture, and federal legislators to reinstate whole milk as a allowable option in school breakfast and lunch programs in addition to the existing low-fat offerings, and to recognize the updated nutritional science supporting the safety benefits of whole milk dieted children and adolescents. Miss Sodell, any thoughts on whole milk?
I actually don't believe we need it, but the students have no problem as far as I know with one person in every, if they're going to jump to something, I mean, bring back two percent, why would we jump to whole milk?
Thank you, and I put no position on it because I didn't know if it was an appropriate thing to bring back or not, and the committee was neutral on it, so they couldn't come up with a decision either, so.
Neutral, yeah.
Abstain from the data. Proposal fourteen, New York State School Board shall advocate for the amendments in New York Education Department regulations allowing a set amount of daily recess time up to thirty minutes per day to count towards required instructional hours for elementary students.
I mean, that's a good idea. How about last year?
We were just going like this. Yeah, we supported that last year. The committee was neutral on it, which is why I know we're through. Fifteen, resolved that New York State School Board Association shall advocate for the following policy changes, substantial increase in state reimbursement rate for how the district's special education placements reflect true and current costs of those placements, including transportation-related services, I don't think I need to go any further than that.
That's a yeah.
It's my. Resolution sixteen, resolved that New York State School Board Association seek and promote legislation to affirm reform on current legal notice publications and requirements. That's a district clerk, I don't know why they even put that in there, but they want to change the public notice publication requirements, I'm guessing that's for the budget?
Of the budget?
Yes. Yes, no position. There's rationale, we don't have reading needs today, just. Resolved that New York State School Board Association support renewing the district's potential annual whole harmless phase out to more than two percent of the district budget, even in doing so extends the district's overall phase-out period. I said yes. I said two percent they're allowed? Two percent tax increase.
Whole harmless, we get a two percent right now minimum, so they're saying if they phase that out and put it on a formula, do it slowly, so we would say yeah, do it slowly.
Resolved that New York State School Board Association advocates for budget threshold to protect rural districts with low enrollment and large geographic footprint and foundation in formula? Yes, we should. Nineteen, I didn't have a position on New York State School Board supporting legislation among the school districts to receive compensation from the New York Liquidation Bureau for liability insurance claims arising by claims brought under Child Victim Acts, where the insurance company holds the policy, became insolvent, and its estate was executed by a liquidation bureau. We didn't have any Child Victim Act cases, so I don't have.
That sounds like an extremely specific story.
Yeah. Niagara Falls wrote that, because they have a number of. Number twenty, resolved that New York State School Board Association support an amendment in New York State law that would authorize public school districts to establish a fund health insurance reserve, funded through the board-approved resolution. I'm all about reserves. Do you think we should support that? Twenty-one, resolved that New York State School Board Association urges New York State legislation to amend General Municipal Law Section Six I to explicitly include Board of Quotient of Education Services among the entities authorized to establish and maintain workers' compensation fund. I didn't have a position, because I didn't know that they couldn't, so it sounds like a good thing?
I would think they have it, right?
I thought they would too.
As far as votes goes, abstaining on that.
Yeah, the committee was neutral also. Yeah, the committee was neutral also. Twenty-two, resolve the New York State School Board Association shall support legislative and regulatory changes. To add financial literacy to statewide K- twelve curriculum with additional state funding to support implementations and curricular expectation. I said yes. Last one, this is the rationale, two pages on this one too. But I had no position on it. Cause I don't, I mean, I'll be interested to hear what the board thinks. So this is, uh, New York State School Board Association supports. Legislation on the state level that allows school districts to choose to authorize their school medical director. And their clinical designees to evaluate, diagnose, temporarily treat, and prescribe medication for students on campus in accordance with the New York State law. That's my thought.
Taking, uh. The choice of a parent away from.
We will say no to that. You get those all round, Mr. Stewart?
I did.
Awesome. That's all I have. That's what I usually say to the student, she picked her mom, me.
They got lucky, we could give them the out.
Okay, item A. Item A, A personal consent agenda, approved personal consent agenda, item C through G for the October fourteen, twenty twenty-five agenda. Can I have a motion?
So.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item nine, personnel administrative leave, item nine A, resolved at the time of recommendation of Superintendent Carter. Board of Education of Wilson Central School District hereby approves continuation of administrative leave with pay for employee number seventy. Can I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item ten, other, approve the memorandum agreement between the Wilson Central School District and Wilson Teachers Association. And employee number four seventy-nine regarding the employee's appointment and employment with the district. Can I have a motion? A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item B, approve the temporary microcomputer coordinator contract between the Wilson Central School District and Cindy Smith to assist with technology needs in the district. During the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Effective October seven, twenty twenty-five. At a rate of thirty dollars per hour. Can I have a motion?
So.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item C, approve the flexible benefits administration services agreement between the Wilson Central School District. And P and A Administrative Services Incorporated effective November one, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item D, approve the business associate agreement between the Wilson Central School District and P and A Administrative Services Incorporated. Effective November one, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion?
So.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item D, approve the articulation agreement between SUNY Niagara and Wilson Central School for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six academic year. Your articulation agreement offers quality college level coursework to be, to interested in qualified high school students in order to enhance student learning. While enrolling in high school, to better prepare students for the transition into the freshman year of college. And to extend post-secondary credit at minimal cost to eligible students. Can I have a motion?
So.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Before we get into item F, just wanted to, uh. Read the results of the audit that met part of this meeting and just the results of the lumps in the department audit night. Um, the audit went very well. Revenues and expenditures were consistent with the, the last few years. The changes in balances were mostly due to interest earned or the borrowing and capital project money not yet bonded. Um, the management letter had only two comments, unappropriated fund balance and excess fund balance in the food services fund are over allowable limits. No comments on the extracurricular activity audit. Overall, I think everyone did a great job. It's nothing out of the ordinary from other school districts and. Commend Carolyn and her staff for the wonderful job they did with the audit, so. Item F, except that twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five audit report is submitted by lumps in the department. Can I have a motion? So, a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Do you all should have the letters in your packets, right? Item G, resolved that the Wilson Central School District Board of Education terminate the current contract with Health Economic Partners. Effective October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, per section six, provided in the contract. Can I have a motion?
So.
Second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item H, approve Wilson Central, or Wilson Elementary School volunteers, Ainsley. The Bay, the Bay's?
DeBias.
DeBias, okay, thank you. And Jennifer Ken. Uh, can I have a motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Number eleven, policies, first reading.
Thank you, President Carolyn. We have a. Update to policy fifty-six eighty-one, school safety plan. And board members, just a reminder, cause it's new school year. Board, uh, policy's been news and notes last Friday, it'll be in again this Friday. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, that's really your first read. You have an opportunity to ask me questions either tonight or during the week. Um, but the changes, the rationale, new languages added requiring all district and voces to develop training. For staff and students that include a description of the roles and responsibilities of building level emergency response team. The building level incident command system. And the building level emergency response plan, procedures for implementation of the required emergency response terms. Evacuate, evacuation, hold, hold in place, lock, secure lockout, shelter, shelter in place. And we reviewed that in the district safety meeting. Administrators were asked to meet with their teams and run through those roles and responsibilities. Procedures for conducting drills that address whether a class, classroom will be released from lockdown by law enforcement. Or school or district administrators during the drill. And district and building policies, procedures, and programs related to safety of those with components on violence prevention and mental health. New employees hired after the start of the school year are always required to be, to receive training within thirty days of hire. As part of the district's existing new hire training program, which, whichever comes soon. Board members, if you had a chance to look through the, there's a number of blue sections, blue is stuff that are added to the. Safety plans, red is something they're asking, reds and crossouts are ones that are deleted. For the most part, it's a bunch of added. Piece, but one thing it didn't address is on page two of six, it didn't address it in the. The description was the district's, um, has to have a multidisciplinary behavioral assess team, assessment team. Behavioral assessment teams are counting your regional threat assessment teams, that they need to be established, going through roles and responsibilities. We do have a regional threat assessment team. I think we should, once, once a month. But we also have the ability to, we have teams set up in the district for, as if a student. Tendencies, there are certain behavioral assessments that have to be done. And that's due to try and ward off any kind of possible, so. That's pretty much it for this policy unless you have questions. Okay, thank you. It'll be in your news and note packet and then our next board meeting will be up for. Policies for adoption.
Item twelve, K, approved CPSE, CSC, final board meeting minutes, and IEP recommendations. Data October fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Can I have a motion? So, a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item thirteen, conference request, Mrs. Vaughn for funding needs. Thirteen A, approve conference request per the October fourteen, twenty twenty-five agenda, items B through H. Can I have a motion?
So.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item fourteen, fundraiser request, per fundraiser request per the October fourteen, twenty twenty-five agenda, items B through H. Can I have a motion? So, second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item fifteen, use of facilities request. Fifteen A's approve use of facilities request per the October fourteen, twenty twenty-five agenda, items B through H. Can I have a motion?
So.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. We do have action required for some field trips. Sixteen A, approve field trips request per, per the October fourteen, twenty twenty-five agenda, items B through C. Can I have a motion?
So.
A second?
Second?
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Item seventeen, informational purposes. Item eighteen, A, per those but report, Vice President Stewart, do you have anything?
Our first meeting will be next Thursday. Now get more information at the following.
Mrs. New leadership.
Yes.
No student board member report tonight?
No amendments at the building.
So, item twenty, superintendent's report, Superintendent Carter.
Thank you, board members, and welcome those of you that came and visited us this evening. Um, just, most of these are quite, uh, just reminders, uh. Our trunk retreat at the elementary school is October twenty-fourth at five o'clock. It's gonna be a busy night in Wilson. Because not only is trunk retreat at five o'clock, two hours later is the new fan Wilson football game on the field, so that's gonna be quite the evening. The last time that happened, it took the entire fire department to back me out of the spot that I was handing, handing out. This year, I'm not putting my vehicle in the trunk retreat, but maybe I'll focus on the. Uh, as mentioned during our admin session, we have all of our sports teams doing great, we have really. So outstanding, our football team is doing unbelievable, both our girls and boys soccer team is doing absolutely unbelievable. So they're ranked not only in the section within the state, I want to congratulate them and hope for the best. I don't know what it is, hopefully our football team goes to the stadium, only because it'll be the third time since I've been. Um, our variety show is tomorrow night, seven o'clock. Play is coming up and I did not catch the drama production, Mr. Carter, which do you have to know who it was?
I couldn't tell you the name of it.
I saw it somewhere.
Uh, October two.
Yeah, October thirtieth at seven o'clock and then November first at seven o'clock. Yeah, I got the times, I just couldn't figure out when the. When the, where this play's gonna be. And National Junior Honor Society, Mr. Benton, do you remember the date of that? Well, thank you. And board members, I want to mention this, and this is for anyone who wants to go to, go to this. Dean Little, Executive Director of Rural Schools Association, which Wilson is a member of. And I represent the district as their, one of the board members. Um, I was asked to put together a rural schools issue forum. Um, and I sent this out to all superintendents and I've asked them to send it to their community, their staff. Administrators, it is open to business leaders in the district, staff, teachers, and administrators. And really the forum is to come together and talk about issues that are going on in rural schools. And then the Rural Schools Association then does a position paper and fights for all those things. I'm a huge proponent of being in associations, but I can tell you the Rural, uh, the Rural Schools Association, I believe we paid eight hundred bucks. To be part of it, it's probably the most bang for our buck. They're in Albany all the time pushing the agenda and they're going to, they're having a listening tour. And there's like fifteen dates out here, but Orleans, Minnesota Voces Conference Center, November fifth, six to eight. And you're invited to a public forum dedicated to the future of rural schools and communities. The event will be open. Will open with a briefing on the current state of rural education, followed by an opportunity for attending, attendees to share their perspective. On local and regional challenges impacting rural schools. And like I said, they'll create a position paper similar to the resolution. And then we'll begin to start fighting for them in Albany. That's all I have.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Carter, would that be going out to our PTAs?
It will go out to all, uh, community members. It'll be attached to my, from the home on Friday. So it'll be to every parent, every community member that is attached to that. I'll send it out to staff also. And hopefully we'll get people that are gonna join us on that night. It's at the conference center, it's in a large room. I booked it on behalf of the district, so it wasn't a cost to. So I'm hoping we fill the place and it's a good session.
Just for clarification, for people that don't know where the Ole and Voces Conference Center is, it's not at the main campus, it's at a building. Which is east of that. If you're coming from Wilson, come up four twenty-five, make a right. On thirty-one, and you book about a mile and it's on the right hand side. It's a conference center.
Forty-one twenty-four, Somerset of the road.
Anyone else? Again, thank you to the leadership group today, the administrative meeting. On target, everything's going well, it sounds like. Congratulations. Natalie, congratulations again on her tenure. And, um, this will bring us up to the public forum. So this portion of the agenda provides an opportunity for residents of the Wilson Central School District to be heard. Any person who wishes to address the board is invited to do so at this time. Please state your name and address. Complaints or criticisms about individual school personnel are not appropriate in this forum and will not be allowed. The board may not respond to questions. They should be referred to superintendent schools at another time. Please be respectful and look at your comments in three minutes. Does anybody wish to, um, address the board at this time?
I can do this, Mr. President. I can turn this call up. I think it's thirty-six, thirty-seven, around the world, that's my dealer. I was sure the last, last board meeting. I was sure that the last, last board meeting I talked about, so continued to feature that name I'm going to mention, but I, I wanted to add it to occurrence to this person, I just wanted to talk about the two occurrences. The first occurrence was, I substituted her one day, and she left me instructions on giving out questionnaire, it was ten, ten question, and I forgot, never had one, so I put it out there, the students are answering their questionnaire every day, might be both of the answers, but I wanted to make sure, I found one of the students, her answer keys in her desk, and I asked that the answer key in what it, looking at the answers, and I noticed that one of the answers were not completely right, and so, they made a day up, approached her, and I says, this answer is not completely right, and she, on that we says, why read a lot of books? And it was about the Iraq war, and I says, well, I know you read a lot of books, but I was there, I went and said, and she said, no, I read a lot of books, you know, I know what I'm doing, so I said, fine. And I explained to her, I said, I'm, I'm not just such a teacher, because I felt she took me down, and I says, I'm a certified instructor in the United States, I was, and I thought so, but she didn't know, nothing about it, so, she's, I was just, I felt intimidated, so, she did, I said, maybe she might change the answer, but she writes, because I read this in Iraq, and she said, she said, no, I, I, I knew what I'm doing, and then I read what, so, we can't be there to agree. So, one week later, I'm walking around Hollinger, and one of the students sounded, he said, Mr. Tolan, he said, she says, you can get the wrong answer to find the question, because this question, and I looked at it, being sure I gave it, the instructor said, it's wrong answer, so, it's a paragraph, I was pretty insulted, right? The second occurrence going on on social media, social media, I was reading one of these, it was two thousand twenty, and it was presidential candidate, it was a candidate on social media, and it says, press the button, that's the president, president candidate, so press the button, and it's, this is pretty interesting, so, I played on social media, this is pretty interesting, we press the button, so, and a while later, she was starting to teach at the time, and you give them, you give them, how I don't know what I'm doing, I don't know how to do my databases, and everything like that, I explained to her, well, I was a computer science student at college, I was an analog scientist, I didn't find it, just they should give me the most power, pretty whatever, but analysis, IT, that's what I was gonna, so she just, they were looking at me, and I, I was really, I was, I was very intimidated, but I, my fault, I should have told the administration about it, I didn't, my fault, the next step was stepping on, but she did, you know, I mean, I was, and so myself, if I was a teacher, I wouldn't talk to the vice president of the board, so that, that was part of it, but I talked to many parents and men cons, or discussed because, a lot of time when it comes to voting, she tells the students, she really voted for, that's not dedicated, that's a hack, and she might be about to destroy. First of all, that teachers must educate rather than document, what is of the importance of fostering critical thinking, maybe in thought amongst students, that line I see in the evaluating is where critical thinking, and as everyone said, except before, if this teacher should be terminated, I think you're, well, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Tolan, yeah, thank you for your service. Anybody else like to address the board? Hearing none, there will be a need for an executive session tonight, and there will be board action after that, for, for like devoting purposes, so, for negotiation, negotiation for, personally, there are the fourteen of the civil service law, so, at this time, I don't care, can I have a motion, it'll take us up to the session.
So.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.